Good morning and welcome to Lancaster County's Board of Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, July 9th. And Lancaster County Board Chair Sean Flaherty, with me as Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Reporting options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting held on July 2nd, 2024.
Move.
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to item two, claims. Approval of the claims processed through July 5th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, special presentation, Commissioners Award of Excellence for June 2024 to Ryan Rowe, Community Corrections in the category of Customer Relations. I do have Ryan's nomination to read into the record.
Yeah, would you please come forward and then, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Absolutely. Ryan Rowe, Case Manager with Community Corrections, has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for June 2024. Rowe has worked for Lancaster County for 27 years, including 16 years dedicated to Community Corrections. He was nominated by Kathy Anderson and Sean Stancik in the category of Customer Relations. In their nomination, Anderson and Stancik state, "Ryan Rowe is instrumental in making sure the workflow at Community Corrections runs smoothly as possible. His years of service, along with his knowledge of job duties, what make day-to-day operations click without blowups. Ryan is polite and courteous to all with whom he interacts with, and his professionalism speaks volumes in representing our agency. Ryan is always willing and ready to take on whatever duties may come up. His attention to detail, work ethic, and dependability are top-notch. When it comes to training staff on our electronic monitoring equipment, Ryan is our go-to because he does such a thorough job explaining the ins and outs and nuances. Goes above and beyond explaining the house arrest procedures and monitoring equipment to his clients so they understand the rules very clearly. He is diligent in checking the monitor alerts to ensure clients are in compliance with their house arrest schedule. House arrest saves the county money, and because Ryan treats his clients with respect, this helps them successfully complete their house arrest sentence. He also helps our department save money by making sure we retrieve the electronic monitoring equipment as soon as our clients abscond or are violated for any reason. We want to thank Ryan for his tremendous hard work and flexibility in constantly helping each program at Community Corrections, whether that be transporting people to and from jail, getting them hooked up on monitors, filling in for coworkers, or drug testing clients. He sets a great example for his fellow coworkers with his hard work, dedication, knowledge, and by going above and beyond his job description. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Ryan Rowe the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of June 2024."
Thank you. Jeff, if you'd like to say something?
First off, I want to thank Kathy and Sean for recognizing Ryan and all of his good work. What it said in the award is that Ryan is our go-to guy. He is the most dependable person we've got in the department, and we appreciate what he does every single day. So, once again, thank you very much for all of your hard work and another 27 years. It's very possible. I saw someone who had 51 years who retired just the other day, so congratulations. Thank you.
No, I just, we have a lot of people from Community Corrections here in support of Ryan, so we have a lot of different departments, and everybody relies on Ryan, whether it's, you know, I forget if I named them all, but it doesn't matter if it's Drug Court Problem Solving Programs, diversion. We need somebody tested, drug testing. Ryan is willing to do all of it, and, you know, we're shorthanded. We just hired some new staff, so there's lots of training. Kathy is retiring soon, so we're really gonna need to continue to rely on. Yeah, just simply thank you for all the hard work you do.
Fifty-one years, Kathy, you can do 51.
So, Ryan, thank you on behalf of the board, and I guess 27 years' service, I guess in the 90s, we could hire teenagers. Anyway, thank you for all the work you do. It's so important we're giving people opportunities and yet holding them responsible as well. Important piece of what Lancaster County is all about. And on behalf of the board, thank you.
Thank you for your service, and this is a plaque in honor of your. Appreciate it. Thank you again.
Would you like to say a few words?
No, I just thank you to all my coworkers. I appreciate you guys.
I appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, genuinely.
Commissioners, that brings us to item four, the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice, unless there's an exception. These items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of amendments to the following county contracts. C-24-0208 with Kate Speck to provide motivational interviewing to training to Department of Corrections staff. C-23-0464 with Felsberg Holton Oldig for on-call general engineering services. C-23-0523 with Firespring for business card and letterhead printing. B, receive and place and file the following reports from clerk of the district court, assessor register of deeds, records and information management, county clerk and county sheriff, and C, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the county city building regarding an appeal on special permit 24014 for the Cedar Hills Community Unit Plan on approximately 75.31 acres of total of five acreage lots, four of which will be near West Old Cheney Road.
Move approval of the consent items? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, unfinished business, 5A, setting the salary for Assistant Public Defender Sarah Newell in the amount of $142,000 as attorney-to, effective July 29th, 2024.
Good morning. Kristi Agar, Lancaster County Public Defender, here to request that the county board confirm my request to hire Ms. Newell at the salary which was previously presented, considered, and approved, and allow me to hire her on July 29th. I will be brief. You have the resume and other information that I submitted with respect to Ms. Newell and also the memorandum before the board. I apologize, I was in court last week, and so it had to be delayed to today. The plan would be for Jimmy Seaborn, he is retired, he is going to Hennepin County Public Defender's Office July 12th, so this Friday he'll be leaving. Our plan would be to have Ms. Newell step in on July 29th, and HR requested that I say the specific payroll date, so that would be effective, the payroll starting July 25. She has, Ms. Newell will be able to immediately take over all of Mr. Seaborn's cases, plus the next major case, God forbid, that we would get, and she has had the experience to effectively and efficiently handle felony cases in the public defender's office, in the Commission on Public Advocacy, and also in Berry Law. Now, we take in our office very seriously our constitutional and ethical obligations to provide effective assistance of counsel to all of our clients. We will not move an attorney in misdemeanor dockets or juvenile dockets to felonies until they have sufficient experience to be able to handle serious cases. There is an extreme loss of liberty that is at risk in felony cases, and so our office likes to train people up before we put them in those types of cases. The benefit of hiring Ms. Newell is that she is immediately able to do those cases. We have one misdemeanor attorney currently that we are working on getting her ready to move up to felonies that will take place on August 1st, and she will only be able to take the least of the cases, like, you know, possession of controlled substance and the like. So, moving her up to felonies, Ms. Gasaway, she's the misdemeanor attorney that's gonna move up, that will hopefully help us in being able to control some of the overload motions that we've been having to file, but it's not going to take care of major cases, it's not gonna take care of Mr. Seaborn's cases, of which he has some very serious cases. And so, hiring Ms. Newell allows us to immediately take care of those needs. And I just found out last Friday that we have a felony attorney who has worked with us for 12 years. She's going to be leaving the office the end of July, July 29th, to take a job in Omaha. And so, that puts us in even more need to hire an, immediately, an experienced attorney. So, it is in the best interest of the office and best interest of us being fiscally responsible and being able to handle serious cases to hire Ms. Newell, so I ask the board to grant that.
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Commissioners, that brings us to item six, new business, 6A, real estate exchange agreement between the County of Lancaster and the City of Lincoln for the property within the block bounded by 8th and 9th Streets and J and K Streets in Lincoln.
My name is Abby Luttrell. I'm an Assistant City Attorney for the City of Lincoln, 555 South 10th Street, and Director --
Good morning. Peter Hind, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. Good morning.
So, are we able to get this image up?
It just takes a second.
We thought we'd let Abby do the law stuff, and I'll update you on the project and where we are right now.
So, we are talking about a couple of parcels just across the street on 9th Street, 802 J Street and 555 South 9th Street. Both of these parcels are owned 50% each by the city and the county, and then this yellow section here is vacated alley space, which is owned by the county. The exchange agreement before you contemplates essentially giving each parcel 100% ownership. So, over here at 802 J Street, county would convey its interest to the city, city would convey county's interest, its interest to the county over here at 555 South 9th Street. So, here are the key terms of the agreement. The property that the city will be acquiring has a higher value than what the county would be acquiring. The difference is $155,000. Rather than a cash payment for that difference, this agreement requires that the city pay for the demolition of that aging properties building, also to relocate the driveway space that's over there right now, and Director Hind will talk about that. And then, if there's anything left of that $155,000, then the city would pay for striping, parking striping that parking lot after demolition. So, that's the --
Gonna be anything left, I mean.
Well, we may get good bids.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's true. We just don't know the complexity of raising that building and what the cost would be on that.
So, that's the overview of what the proposed transaction is, and Director Hind can speak to you about the project the city intends to construct.
Yeah, I thought I would just give you a little bit of an update of where we are in the process. Right now, we're going through the Capitol Environs Commission. This building, the site, is within their purview. That goes back to them on Friday for another review. We're doing some very minor adjustments on the site plan.
In their purview, it's not, it's not like the site restriction lines, though.
Mm-hmm.
Is?
Yes, it is. It's part of the Capitol Environs District, yes. That's why they're reviewing it.
Okay, all right, keep going, yeah.
Yeah, we were a little surprised, too, when we saw the map. I'm showing this first, just so you can sort of see a colorful view of, this is more focused on the building that the city is building, the permanent supportive housing. Twenty-four units has been published. This is one of the mayor's 13 pillars, so really important project. CenterPoint has been hired to manage it. They've been integral in the design phase as well, helping us take the project to be very specific to Lincoln. And you can see here the 11 parking stalls that will be for the permanent supportive housing and that new driveway that will be constructed. This is a little bit more messy drawing, but it shows the existing drive here that's paved and the new drive that's being moved to the west, almost the drive width. So, we'll come in and park in the 11 stalls for the city side, and then to the right, there will be the controlled gate to the 55 stalls that the county will get, secured stalls. And we're also maintaining the access off of 9th Street as well, so this parking will have very good circulation throughout the site, once we raise the building, obviously, and get that built. And then, I'll just quickly show you just a couple of renderings of the building. This is from the southeast perspective. You can see the building has a lot of glass, a lot of light on the main floor to provide transparency and security. It even has a front porch. This building is based on a lot of research and other projects of similar type in Iowa that have been built. And again, as I said, Sinclair Hilli, the architects, did a wonderful job making it specific to Lincoln. We've changed the bed layout, we've changed the stair situation, so it's a much safer and more open building, all designed around trauma. Over 90% of the folks that will be here have had some sort of trauma in their life. And then, here is from the southwest perspective, showing that sort of front porch that's very safe, and again, the glazing that will be there coming into the public spaces and the circulation spaces, so you always have a connection to the exterior. So, we're really excited about it. Hopefully, we have a permit here soon, and we're going out for bids for contractors, and we start to move dirt really soon. I also wanted to just mention that the District Energy did have piping coming into the building, and I believe that just now on 9th Street, there's an area sort of cordoned off where they're gonna go and do that remediation for that piping. I think that's for the dirt that's exposed right now, so we'll be getting that done with this project as well. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have approval. Yeah, I'm good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None, please call the roll.
Thanks for your time.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6B, the agreement with Kissel Cohoat ES Associates LLC for Legislative Services. Cost to the county is $81,000 for each year of the agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6C, an agreement with Dwight Brown to deliver substance use education and other trauma-informed treatment interventions to participants in Lancaster County Community Corrections Programs. Cost to the county shall not exceed $44,000.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Kilpatrick with Community Corrections. This is an agreement with Mr. Brown to provide therapeutic intervention primarily for black men that are enmeshed in the criminal justice program and have substance abuse issues. This is called a HEAT Program Rehabilitation, Empowerment, Accountability, and Therapy. It addresses the core triggers of self-destructive behavior rather than merely focusing on the extent of their substance abuse issues. This approach comprises of 36 modules, and it takes about nine months for the individual to complete the program.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Jeff, I mean, just nine months of exploring triggers, that's a lot. It must, can you tell us a little bit more about what that looks like for the individuals going through it?
Landon knows much more about the program than I do. I'll let him --
We get Landon up.
I'll let him answer the questions. He's actually sat through the training.
It's, it's one of the few promising programs that really addresses the cultural differences that exist with the young adult male, black population. There is also a HER program that addresses for young black females, and, oh, I don't know the name of it, but there is a juvenile program as well that we're looking into, and Dwight is actually LIHPP at Lincoln Public School, so I think he has some interest in even taking it to the public school system as well, so. But, yeah, it is nine months and get really a core group together that identify, have shared similar life experiences and really address different issues than what others may face. So, it's not just a substance use treatment modality, but addresses the whole, the whole person.
Very good. Sounds really intense, but it sounds like it's really effective. We've seen similar models, but to be specific to that, that culture is great.
Yep, and it's, and it's an attempt to address some of the disparities that exist, you know, that we all know exist in the criminal justice system, and hopefully, we can get some good results as part of our grant. It'll also be studied as part of our grant with the Public Policy Center.
Well, we certainly do appreciate you bringing this forward to this community.
Absolutely.
Excellent. I'm sorry, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next up is item 6D, an interlocal agreement addendum between Lancaster County, the City of Lincoln, and the Regional Behavioral Health Authority to create an intergovernmental agency to develop and administer the Square One Youth Family Crisis Response Center.
Good morning. Leslie Erns with Lincoln Lancaster County Human Services and Barney. We've received a lot of excitement with Square One hopefully opening here in 2025, but services have started at Center Point. The creation of Square One wouldn't have been possible without the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County, and then Region 5 as well. So, we thank you for your continued support for the youth and families in our community.
I'm gonna make a rule that no one's allowed to bring Barney up here. It's just coercive against the board.
Move approval.
Yeah, I see. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Thank you.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's a really exciting one. I'm really, really glad we have that done. That's a, that's a big deal. Yeah. Mr. Clerk, please continue.
Item 6E, an agreement with the Nebraska Secretary of State to provide the state with petition validation for candidates running for office statewide in Nebraska by petition. The state shall pay the county election commissioner for petition validation services at a rate that does not exceed $20 per hour.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Wilchin, Lancaster County Election Commissioner. Before you, you have the interlocal agreement. This is somewhat unique in that we have candidates running for statewide office by petition. We have a Senate candidate, as well as a presidential secretary of state's office, has asked us to assist. They're busy pagingation, pagingating over half a million petition as we speak, and so they need our assistance. And so, this interlocal agreement is at no cost to the property taxpayers in Lancaster County. Any questions?
Thank you for being here this morning, Todd, and thank you for all the work you're doing. I know there's a lot of interest in the next election, and people are, have a lot of initiatives that we're gonna be looking at carefully.
And we're starting probably later this week validating our own county's petition signatures for the four initiatives, well, actually, five, and there'll likely be a sixth one. So, we'll be very busy this summer, and so this is actually good practice getting started with these, 'cause these petitions has a lower threshold. For a presidential, no more than 2,500 statewide; for Senate, no more than 4,000 statewide. So, it's a smaller number. It does kind of help, that's why we're able to do this, is that this is not nearly the quantity that the other petitions would have.
Okay. Great. One of the great things about the state of Nebraska is the people, through petition, get to have a voice in government decisions, and we've seen that in recent elections, so here we are again. I thank you for being a part of it. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
6F, a memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Association of County Officials for purposes of allowing Lancaster County to use NACO's bulk mail permit to mail postcards as required by Nebraska v. statute 77-1633.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6G, an engagement from McGrath North to provide professional legal services to Lancaster County.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6H, contract with ARS and ARS Incorporated to provide 10 and C-Channel replacement at two county engineering buildings. Cost to the county is not to exceed $129,890.
Pam Dinkelman, Lancaster County Engineer, just to remind the Commissioners, the buildings of the engineering department are not part of the Public Building Commission, so we maintain them within the department. This is to replace the fiberglass that surrounds the shop.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to six I, contract with Securitas Technology Corporation for the CAT six replacement project. Cost to the county is not to exceed $40,628.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Alexander, Director of the Youth Services Center. This is a project that we discussed a few times, and we're finally here. So I appreciate your support, and we're anxious to get this done. It's something that's important. We got it going on at the adult facility as well. The wiring's original to the building, so it's 22 years old and certainly doesn't do a great job of supporting the technology that we have today. So thank you again.
Thank you for working through this process, because in the end, when this system is upgraded, it'll be a better environment for the people working there, the people who are being held there, better safety all the way around.
Yes, sir. We're going to be able to take advantage of the technology that we have, so it's, it's a good thing.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six J, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award a sole source contract to NMC for preventative maintenance for all county motor graders. Estimated cost of the county, excuse me, estimated cost of the contract is $250,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is the first time I've brought this type of contract before the board before, and this is a contract with NMC to have them actually go out to the site where the motor graders are and do the general maintenance to them, oil changes and that sort of thing. This will save us from having the motor grader drive all the way in and, and then have the operator and the motor grader, the, the time associated with that, with them being out. And so we believe that this is a big step towards additional efficiency within the department.
Both for efficiency as well as economic value. So I would move approval.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to item seven, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Good morning.
Could you say your name, please?
It's Duane Rousher.
Duane Rousher, okay. Right. Thank you.
On, on the agenda, on point number two, the claims, I see that you have changed the dates that, that you approved these, and so it's not in the future, which is a very good move. The other, the other thing I would suggest is that you actually put in a dollar amount that you're approving. Who knows what the dollar amount is that you're approving? Do you actually know what it is that you've approved? This is very similar to what we do through the election process, too. We, we count votes, we say that is the number, and we actually don't have any way to verify it. Cast vote record, we need to see those type of information that goes on to build those numbers. If you hide those things, how do we know? Same is true with the expenditures. How do you know what you're actually approving? How many dollars did you approve? Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Boer, regarding elections. In January of 2017, the outgoing Obama administration federalized elections by declaring election infrastructure critical national infrastructure. This was all a setup, just like the Help America Vote Act was. In November of 2018, Trump created CISA, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, by signing an act of Congress to create said agency. CISA was to be responsible for protecting our nation's critical infrastructure from physical and cyber threats. To take over control of our national election infrastructure and prevent it from being hacked, they brought in hackers from the CIA and the NSA. There's just one small problem. Those hackers and the broader intelligence community from which they come were and still are very corrupt and intensely anti-Trump. So they hacked the election infrastructure and helped rig the election to suit their interests. After the election, everyone wanted to know what happened. Rather than answer, CISA launched into a huge censorship campaign to cover up their crimes. They censored millions of people on social media before and after the election. Has anyone ever heard of the First Amendment? At any rate, anyone who questioned what they were doing was regarded as spreading dis, mis, and malinformation. We are now, just like we are being accused by Evan and Ben of the same, we are now the criminals because our simple questions were regarded as a threat to critical national infrastructure. How ridiculous. We said to CISA, hey, there's a problem with election and security. These things look hackable. You guys are in charge of defending against hacking. What's going on? And they said, oh, that's misinformation. You can't question our administration. If you do, you're now attacking elections themselves because you're undermining public faith and confidence in the security of our elections. This is tantamount to a defendant taking control of his own trial and becoming his own judge and jury. Are we thinking? Are we awake? The same people who are in charge of security of the machines were charged with censoring concerns about the security of the machines. Any, any structure that's rigged like that is inherently rigged. It's rigged to cover up a crime, and it switches the burden of proof where we need to assume a crime occurred. I've said it before numerous times, government isn't what you think it is. In our form of government, we don't elect people to be kings and queens, and we don't elect a bureaucratic and administrative state, otherwise known as the swamp, to do the evil deeds that corrupt representatives want to do but can't. In our constitutional republic, government exists to protect the God-given right of the people to self-government, from evildoers and from those elsewhere in government who would become destructive of that right. Nothing is more destructive to those rights than farming out the administration of our all, all-important elections to private interests who offer no transparency or verifiability as Robert Evan and Wayne Benner have done and continue to do. Nothing is more destructive. What? No excuse, no chain of custody, mail-in ballots, no, excuse me, secret vote counts? If people are so trustworthy, if people don't cheat, why don't we just have mail-in drug tests? We have been deprived of our all-important right, the right to verifiably choose our own representatives. When that part of our government that is supposed to administer our elections on our behalf farms them out to private interests and then tries to censor us and prevent us from speaking out about the maladministration of those elections, rather than simply providing us with proof of honesty and accuracy, we know that it is time for we, the people, to alter or to abolish that government. Read the Declaration, read our state constitution, particularly the preamble and Article One. May God help us.
Okay. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yep, saying none.
Item eight, announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July 11th, 2024 at 8:30 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July 16th, 2024 at 9 a.m., with the Board of Equalization immediately following in room 112 of the county city building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on ALO Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire TV. Last item I have is adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are adjourned.
That's pretty official.
I don't know, they gave me a gab, but, I don't, I don't, it was mistaken. We will now, we will now convene the Lancaster County Board of Equalization for Tuesday, July
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written material to be discussed at today's open meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Hearing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, waivers for the 2024 451 exemptions and applications on real personal property. Applications received after the deadline per Nebraska law statute 77-202.01 require to have a waiver granted by the Lancaster County Board of Equalization before county
I'm sorry, I don't, what is this? I don't know what this is.
Corey Beadie, County Assessor, Registered Deeds Office. So we had a number of property owners miss the December 31st deadline for filing their permissive tax exemption application, but fortunately, there's a generous grace period, and so we had a number of them for your consideration that we could take action on, but first you need to grant them a waiver of that December 31st deadline.
And we're within our statutory right to do so.
Exactly. And so then we would review them and bring our recommendations to you next week for action, so.
This seemed like a large number. Was there a change in the process or something that caused that? Just coincidence?
I think probably because it's the four-year renewal.
Four years?
Yeah. It's a reapplication period, I guess we should call it. So, yeah, I think that you're just seeing more of them because of that reason.
I would move approval of the waiver.
Yeah, I would second that, and the four-year makes more sense out of this than a yearly.
And in those off-years, remember, it's that reaffirmation process where the assessor's office can approve that without them coming to you unless there was a change in status or use or something like that, or ownership.
Certainly, the organizations are honorable, I mean, important organizations in our community. I mean, Center for the Camp Creek Threshers.
Yes, and absolutely, a shout-out to Connie in our office because she follows up with these folks to make sure that, first of all, that they hit that December 31st deadline, and then for those, through whatever circumstance, and you saw all the letters and all the, all the information that was submitted with that, she's always making sure that they get in during that grace period, too. We don't want them to lose out on their exemption status.
I would also note that in a lot of the letters, they referred to Connie and appreciated her help, so.
Thank you.
That's very good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the waivers. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is public comment.
Any members of the public wishing to speak? Saying none.
Item four is adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.